My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. I am the President of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, by my count, we have a forum, correct?
We do.
All right. First order of business will be to hear from the superintendent on the CTE expansion grant. Exhale.
All right. Obviously, folks, a big thank you to everybody for coming in for a special meeting like this. I know it's very unusual. I want to make sure everybody kind of understands, as you probably recall, last week we did have a joint committee with finance, financial planning, and capital improvement. It was a really good meeting. We had conversations about what we're going to talk about tonight. One of the things that was hitting me as we went through the conversation last night, and I even kind of said to Calvin a couple of times during the meeting, was, now, should everybody be hearing this? Because this is a big deal. This is a potential large expense for a building that we, I think, there's no one in this room who would not want to have another building if, obviously, they were free. So there's things that are part of this, but it's a big deal taking a look at this. And the following day, we had the MVP event that went super great. Secretary of Education was great. Lieutenant Governor was great. Both of them interacted with kids way more than I expected them to. But anyhow, it went very well. And Diane walked over to me and she said, "Tom, I didn't sleep last night." And proceeded, I'll let her tell her story at some other time. But just thinking about that, that maybe there just needed to be some more conversation, I mentioned something to John that, I said, "Listen, I have no problem with the fact..." I should say that the joint committee had kind of decided to kind of take a pause and not necessarily take action on the grant. So, but I just said, "Listen, I just think, I feel bad that if everybody doesn't get a chance to put their two cents in." So that's why we kind of called this special meeting. As it is, the grant is, has to be submitted tomorrow, so we're kind of under the gun. This was all kind of pulled together last minute. I apologize for that. But again, it's a big decision, and I think we should have some good conversations, and hopefully we'll tonight. The person, the big opening presentation that we're going to start out with, you know, as always, Kate Whitaker is our person who writes all their grants. When this particular grant came out at the end of August, beginning of September, she's been working on that, on this grant since then, putting the pieces together and everything else. So it certainly would make sense for her to kind of walk our way through what exactly is involved in this and everything else. So without further ado, Kate?
Hi. All right. Thank you for coming out. Stand right in front of you. Okay. Donnie?
Oh, I have.
Do I? Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I'm just going to do a quick overview about, do you want me to stand here?
Beg your.
Okay. Sorry. So I'm just going to do a quick overview about the CTE expansion grant. I know you've probably heard about it before, but it's due tomorrow. They reserved up to $60 million for this type of project. We can submit one application. It's a multi-year project for two, two and a half years. The grants should range from $2 to $5 million, and the proposals can support up to three Chapter 74 programs. Likely, we'll see people apply for the full $5 million, so likely 12 awards.
That $5 million over three years is what you're saying?
$5 million. It's a $5 million award, and you can spend that $5 million over two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
So it'll be the rest of FY '26, this school year, all of the next, and then all of this.
Okay.
Funding can go, and what's interesting about this one is obviously the dollar amount, but this funding can support planning, design, and construction to increase our program. And the funding request can include up to $250,000 for program startup costs, and they define that as salaries and curriculum development. Eligible applicants, anyone who's operating a CTE, Chapter 74 program. So it's not just vocational schools. There are comprehensive districts who also have Chapter 74 programs in their schools. Preference, though, will be given to schools who have huge weight, and so obviously Monty Tech is one of those. Evaluation of past, projected, future, or moment will be considered, I feel like we're okay there. Preference may be given to schools working with MSBA. That's not us. I don't like that, but that's just in pace right out of the documents document. All right, so the objective of this funding is to support increased access, in short. So we want to increase the number of students who are able to participate in vocational training. You'll see five bullet points down the side. We satisfied four of them. Typically, I wouldn't think we're a good candidate unless we satisfy at least two of them. So the fact that we satisfied four, I think that's good. The first one, increase the number of students able to participate in an existing program. Yes?
Excuse me, Jeff. Let's finish the presentation before we ask questions.
I forgot my questions.
Okay. So do you have the presentation in front of you?
No.
All right.
It is on four docs.
Is it? Okay. All right, so we're going to increase the number of students able to participate in an existing program. We will create a new program, too, in our proposal, to meet demonstrated demand based on labor market data and employer partnerships. We will not increase enrollment capacity and availability and utilization of the equipment beyond the traditional school day for high school students. That would have been if we were doing like another MVP model. We would have satisfied that. But we will increase enrollment capacity, availability, and utilization for adult students beyond the traditional workday. And then the applicant must also demonstrate significant improvement in the skills of students who are able to participate in a program due to replacing capital equipment. So $5 million grant, big building project, and a large portion of that has to be the equipment. We satisfied that. So we started with medical assisting. And the big question, why did we start there? So mass book schools have to deliver curriculum aligned to approved Chapter 74 programs. And you all know, we currently have 21 Chapter 74 programs we're approved to operate. You can also take pieces of other curriculum, right? So I have, we have health assisting, for example. We're approved to operate health assisting. You can supplement the health assisting frameworks with up to 25% of any other frameworks. It makes sense that they're supplementing with medical assisting, right? So, so that's that. Okay. Currently, the school is delivering the curriculum aligned with 100% of medical assisting. So we're able to do pretty much all of health assisting and all of medical assisting in our one existing program. Currently, we have two instructors who are already licensed in medical assisting. So, so in my determination, it made sense then to apply for a new program because the instructors would be teaching in their licensed area. The school would be appropriately approved to deliver curriculum in medical assisting and then again in health assisting. We could admit 20 more students, 20 per grade level, up to 80 students in this medical assisting program. And then medical assisting occupations are in critical demand, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then there's documented student interest. I put out a student interest survey to area seventh and eighth grade students, and there were, I don't know, seven or eight different vocational programs. And the question was, which programs would you like to see added to Monty Tech? And the first one was criminal justice and public safety, and the second one very clearly was medical assistance. So that was the first one. Okay, so this grant, like most of the grants that are put out by Commonwealth Corporation or the Executive Office of Education, asks us to refer back to often the blueprint documents. So anything that has to do with our mass hire partners, we really have to keep that partnership close when we're writing this grant. So the first thing you have to do is go into the blueprint document and say, what are our top three regional workforce priorities? And so the first one is healthcare, second is manufacturing, and the third is transportation. And you'll see in healthcare, medical assisting is laid right out, which is great. And also pharmacy tech. And we've been thinking a lot about how can we add pharmacy tech at the high school level? There's just such a demand for those jobs. So kind of kept that in the back of our mind. All right, so in my head at this point, I'm thinking, it makes sense for our teachers, it makes sense for the added students, and we just have so much interest right now in our students who come into Monty Tech. They just love the healthcare program, and so, you know, they'd have more availability to pursue something like that. And so we started really formulating a public health and safety training center kind of concept. So then we went back and forth for a long time, and I know in a previous presentation we were talking about the facility down the street, 601, that had the old helicopter pad on top of it. And we moved away from that because people really felt very strongly that if our students are going to be in a new space, it really does need to be on our campus, as close to the, as close to the facility as possible. And what we can't do, that other schools might be able to do with this type of funding, is blow out a wall and just add right onto it. We can't for a lot of reasons, and mostly it's sprinklers. There's just, and I know that I really minimize that. I'm sure there's many other reasons we can't do that, but it would cost millions of dollars for us to just get the rest of the building up to code if we were going to do that. So we have to have something that's detached a little bit. Okay, so we originally talked about doing something down on the grassy spot, far out. We then learned there's sewer and water lines that run right through that grassy area. We learned it would be about $100 to $150,000 just to move those at minimum, and it still wouldn't create the space that we wanted. We would have to do a really large, very expensive retaining wall, moving all the way down that. So one of our architects suggested, and then I later found out Diana had suggested it, why can't we just put the building right on the parking lot and then extend the parking out into the grass? Because you don't dig so far that you really interrupt the gas and the water and sewer lines. And so when the architect suggested it, I told Tommy, "I just had that yesterday." And so I was like, "Okay, this is good." So we have some good ideas. So we went back and forth, kind of carving out two ideas. One, more instructional space, right? So right now, Health Occupations is operating in 3,846 square feet. They're serving about 54 students a day in 3,846 square feet. We want to make sure that any move is worth their while. And if we're going to be now talking about 80 students, because juniors and freshmen and juniors, freshmen and juniors on both sides, we're talking about 80 students. Still not doubling 54 students, but that's a lot of students. We want to make sure they have a lot of space to work with it. So if you assume this is 10,000 square feet, and let's assume this space, and I'll go through that a little bit, this space right here is a dissection lab, that's another thousand square feet. We're talking about 1,000, 11,000 square feet that they would now have access to for 80 students a day as opposed to 3,846 square feet for 54 students. So I think you guys have this plan in front of you. Do you want me to walk through it, or just the big ideas?
Just the big ideas.
I'm going to do some big ideas. Okay. So you walk into the building this way. This first floor is the public safety space. You'll see a bunch of offices down here. This is LPN, which might sound like it doesn't make a lot of sense, but it does, because remember, this is only one shop down here, and this is two shops upstairs. So one shop down here will house LPN office space, maybe a small LPN kitchenette because they're here till nine o'clock at night. You'll walk in and you'll see this kind of glassed-in curved space. This is a mock courtroom, which is great, because if you don't know, they recently revised the public safety frameworks. They're very varied, but they're really cool. I think students would really love it. So having a mock classroom would really be very engaging and bring people in. This is just a typical classroom space. 21, oh, the dispatch center. Big push in public safety right now to get more people certified in 911 call centers and just general dispatch for ambulance and all kinds of other places. So we would be able to train people in dispatch there. We have some wonderful partners who are very excited about that. This we called the PT Flex Room because if you take a look at the frameworks, you'll see everything from juvenile legal issues to fire suppression operations, right? I wasn't really sure what kind of instructional space you'd need for that, so we kind of just created it as like a multipurpose room. This is that dissection lab that both public safety, when they're doing biomedical stuff, finger painting, things like that, that could work in here. And then this shop, medical assisting and health assisting, certainly would use a dissection lab. And then this is a good classroom. These little spaces here are little crime scene labs set up. So we did a lot of research around public safety training spaces typically found in colleges and universities, and they had a lot of these smaller spaces that instructors would set up like a crime scene. They would assign two teachers to each, or two students, two to four students to each little scene. They'd have to do a quick analysis and come back and present. We really love that idea. We're just trying to think of ways to keep students kind of moving through the building and using all the resources and staying in there. And then you go upstairs, and the first thing you see is this pillow-shaped kind of blast-in area that I just love. It's specifically designed for the credentialing opportunities that are going to be added if we can get this space. This is a simulation pharmacy. This is a simulation phlebotomy lab, and this is a simulation surgical suite. So students will work and learn in these spaces and gain new credentials. Not so much surgical suite yet. Maybe our evening students would do something through school to continue yet, but phlebotomy and pharmacy for sure, our students will work and learn in. These are two smart rooms for underclassmen. I say smart rooms, I don't know. It's more lecture spaces for underclassmen. These are the upperclassmen rooms, and this would be like Kylie Boyman's new room. Right now, she has a very, very small room, and she has beds kind of on top of where her tables are. And she was in the room one day when our architect was here measuring out the spaces, big idea for the parking lot, and she said, "What I really would like is very distinct spaces. Instruction, lecture, and then practice over here." And right now, her sinks are all the way across the room. So when they're testing for, say, CNA, they have to go across the room, and the testing agent say, "This really isn't an ideal setup. We can't ding the student for it, but ideally, this isn't right." So Kylie said, "It would be so nice if you could have a bank of sinks right there that kids could work with." And also created a nice environment. And she also said, "We really have never been able to teach our students how to get patients in and out of a shower safely or off a commode safely." So we added that space here right in her workspace. So it's just a lot of like little additions that I think are really going to make this new training program kind of speak to the students and really respond to what instructors need. So Merge Architects is who we've been working with, because when you write 25 pages of narrative, you really, I can picture it in my head and I love it, but I'm not sure anyone reading this grant in Malden will get it as much as I do. So we really wanted some visuals. I wanted something that said, "Oh, now I see what she's saying." And I love the floor plan because I get it, but even, these are even better. Next slide. So you may not like water, and I get it, because I'm not sure I do either, but what I love about this is how the architect really tried to make it so bright, so airy, and tied to the existing campus. So right now, in our parking lot, there was like a little green space here, and he tried to mimic the shape over here, creating a little outdoor space for students, using lots of windows. And you'll see in one of the images coming up, with big bright windows, you do feel like you're still on the campus in the meantime. Okay? This kind of goes back to Kylie's room, right? So this would be her separate instructional space. She has her own Promethean or a SMARTboard, and then a demonstration table in the front, bank of sinks with a lot of storage underneath. And then these are individual like nursing home rooms, so you practice kind of going in and taking care of patients. These are those underclassmen rooms that are, that will seat up to 50 students, which would be great because they're going to be used for LPN 2 in the evenings. But again, see how, I thought it was kind of nice that they did this. You can see, you're looking right out onto the campus, so you do feel pretty connected to it. And so that's just an idea of what a building could look like with this kind of funding and this size. Okay, so now, that's what would happen if we brought in medical assisting, but what would that mean for the existing health occupations programs? So right now, we're thinking, it would mean teachers would be assigned to the program they're licensed to teach. So we have four health doc teachers right now. Two are licensed in health assisting, two are licensed already in medical assisting. Now they're all teaching in their appropriate areas. Students, though, would be required to pick one pathway, and that's kind of a sticking point, right? So like, which pathway do you choose? So the big thing we talked about as recently as today is make sure that when you're defining these two programs, you have specific credentialing opportunities for each program. For example, medical assisting must include pharmacy tech, and health assisting must include CNA or EKG technician, right? So if I'm a freshman and I'm coming in and I see all this wonderful health stuff in this beautiful new building, I don't know what to choose. I look at the credentialing and I say, "Oh, this speaks to me more," so I'm going to put that one as my first choice. Oh, can you go back to some?
No, sorry.
Okay. So teachers' instructional tools, equipment, and technology would not be relocated until the summer of '27, because beginning fall '27, that's when people would be out. Teachers would teach the same curriculum that they're presently teaching, but they're going to be asked to add new credentialing opportunities. And then we talked about how they'll have additional square footage, which would be great. Okay, and so in this one, this is interesting. These are, and I talked with health occupations teachers today. When I got here 18 years ago, I remember asking people what the different certifications students were earning were. And so, you know, many shops have one, two, three, and I got to health occupations and they listed eight 18 years ago, and I was like, "What?" So they still have tons of certifications, but this is what they're currently doing. You could still offer all of those and then work in EKG, which they're already teaching. They just don't ask the students to sit for the certification exam. And we could move in pharmacy tech without a partner, CBS. That would be no cost. It's not a huge amount of time and guaranteed job placement coming out of that. So, so the idea is that we're not trying to upset a good thing too much, but we are trying to elevate it just a little bit and make them a little bit more distinct by adding separate certification programs. Okay, so one of the questions was, can our students even sit for these exams that are new and they sound, to me, they sound pretty technical, pretty sophisticated? And so I went on NHA, it's the National Health Careers, I don't know, I'm going to butcher John. But they already do their certifications through this organization now, but they have an eligibility test right online. So you say, "Okay, I want to become certified EKG technician." And then they say, "Have you completed a program that includes EKG training?" "Yeah." And then, "Do you have a high school diploma?" So I really hated to click "no" on this one, but the next one was, "Do you expect to earn it within 12 months?" "Yes." And so then, good news, you're eligible. So as long as you're about to graduate, or you're within a year of graduating, you can sit for these exams, which means end of junior year or anytime senior year, you should be good to go. So the same could be said for patient care technician, or building and coding specialist, or others that they offer. Okay, so now you go, they're already teaching all this. Is there time to add more certification programs to it? And I don't know. I mean, we don't really know the answer to that, but talking with the teachers, you say, "You're already teaching all of this. If you want to keep teaching all of these and keep these certifications in place, you're really going to have to analyze what your curriculum and your instructional delivery kind of schedule looks like." Because typically, patient care programs run 60 to 80 hours, and typically, building and coding, 50 to 60 hours. There are jobs in these, if you get certified, and we were only trying to pick jobs that paid a livable wage. So if I could find anything that was paying over $46,000 a year, that's what I was putting up here, because $46,000 a year in North Central Massachusetts is what they're considering the minimum of a livable wage. And then EKG technician requires more hours, but like I said, they're already teaching elements of it into the program, so we didn't have to really carve out new time for that. And this is probably just too much information, but you want to know how many hours they actually get in health occupations or any vocational program this school year. They're getting 1,934 hours of vocational training. So I sat down on the school calendar and I counted the A weeks and B weeks, and I did the numbers of hours. So freshman year, obviously, you don't want to get it half the year, so I had 275. Second year, sophomores, they get 559. Juniors, they, in health, now they get 525 plus 55, so they actually get 580 hours. 55 hours they're already going out on affiliation. And then they get 2, 520 hours senior year. I just broke it up because so many of their students, 20, I think, are out on co-op right now, so most of their kids go out on co-op. Okay, so why is this proposal so special? The first thing I would say is, I think it's accomplished, I think we can accomplish it. And I wasn't sure I would be able to say that probably four weeks ago, three or four weeks ago. A lot has changed pretty much every day in this process, but I think, I think as we adjusted some timelines and as we kind of worked closer with our DSC CTE liaison, we kind of worked through some kinks. So the first thing would be submit the grant by 3:00 tomorrow. We'll receive on December 18th notice, we received the grant. On December 19th through January 5th, we would be preparing bid materials for design team. School committee would ask you to formally accept. Just kind of go through all of this. Basically, you get down to, when can you start building? You can start building in February, March, '26, and we would need to have the building done by May or June '27. Much better than it was, you know, a month or so ago when we thought the timeline was much, much tighter. While that's happening, while construction's happening, I would be preparing applications for new Chapter 74 programs, medical assisting and public assisting. And timelines for that work out nicely, because they want to walk through a completed facility June '27. So if we finish the building May, June '27, we show them into the new beautiful space, built with beautiful equipment, and then that's the final endorsement for our programs being approved, and then students would be admitted and start utilizing the new space fall '27. So I think it's doable. But I could be wrong. But I think it's doable. Our application will receive preference. I always liked that word, it was nice. Worried about this one, though. Executive Office of Education submitted, they send this document out to the developers, and if anybody in the network asks them a question about a grant, they have to write down the question and write down the answer and give it to every one of us who's writing the grant. And somebody asks, "Can I apply for this next year?" And they said, "No future rounds are planned or approved at this time." And I looked, that question was asked on October 7th. Tom has some more recent information that he heard from a lawyer. This is all I know, straight from the Executive Office of Education, so I don't want to promise that this funding stream will be here next year. So I think it's a good idea to move on to share.
Just very quickly, Anthony Al-Dalgad, it's hard to pronounce his last name, is the liaison, the legal liaison for MAVA to the State House, to the State House, the reps and everything else. He believes that because this seems to be such a popular program and so many of the vocational schools are applying this, that the state is going to want to keep the positive vibes going and that they might offer it again next year as well. What he's hearing is that they want to do it next year, but there's nothing on paper, there's nothing official, there's nothing...
And that's true for any grant. Just so you know, I mean, I typically say, "We don't know if it's going to be offered again next year." So, you know, if you can, usually go, while it's available. I will say, I've been working with an anonymous donor, it sounds so sketchy when I say it like that, but I promise it's not. This same anonymous donor has given to the school already $810,000 in the past three years. So I thought, "I'm going to call them and just tell them about this brilliant idea and see what they think." They were very, very excited about it, to the point where they said, "We want to support it. We've never done anything like this. We've never promised grant money prior to even submitting anything. What if we started doing something about, like, if you win this $5 million, then we could do this?" So, so we haven't worked out where I'm supposed to apply for a grant, if we win this grant. I'm supposed to apply for a grant in their February cycle, which would be awarded into February, beginning of March '26. And they asked, "That should be the $500,000 for building costs, because we'd need it then." And then the next building of the grant cycle, which would be February '27, and the award would come late February or early March '27, they asked me to submit another 500K to offset costs associated with equipment and supplies. And what's funny about that conversation is, I said, "Okay." He said, "Draft up a letter." And so I said, "Okay, will the letter say $500,000?" And he said, "And?" And I said, "And thank you very much." He said, "No." "And add another $500,000 to it." So they were very impressed by it, and I was, "That was kind of fun." And then finally, like on a personal note, this is the best grant I've ever seen come out of the school, and it's not because of the writing or, it's just not. What it's because of are the partners, the partners who are kind of coming out of the woodwork. I've never had partners call us and say, "Hey, I heard that you're starting a new public safety program. How can we partner?" And that's what we've been so fortunate to have. So right now, these are some of our partners. CBS, they're going to do the whole pharmacy simulation suite. The president of UMass Memorial Healthcare, I love it when it's that big and there's recognition attached to it. Haywood Hospital, I love. That one was so interesting, the president herself was like, "Okay, we are hungry for medical assistance." She, I connected her with our director of continuing ed. They came out, sat down, and said, "Can you start some more medical assisting programs They came out, sat down and said, can you start some more medical assisting programs now? Because these kids aren't going to be ready for three, four years. So, it just tells you how much of a need is out there. Pittsburgh State, as you know, would be great partners for both public safety and the health care program, but specifically the public safety program with their four plus one police academy, really cool. Their director of the police academy wants to sit on our program advisory committee. Worcester State, North Central Chamber, our Mass Hire program was great. This one is great, because it comes on the state's letterhead of the governor's name and everything, and so you just think, this is going to look really good. But this is the Mass State 911 department. They have their own telecommun, telecommunications certification program. They asked, if you get the grant, can we partner, come into your school, add your students to our certification exam? It's a one-day kind of instructional thing, two-day hands-on in our simulation app. At the end, the students would earn a certification. She says that guarantees them jobs or employability in any 911 center upon graduation. So, that's great. And she came to us referred from this place, that view we're talking about. And then the president of Woods Ambulance, and then most recently, Pittsburgh Fire Department. I mean, yesterday, it's great. Okay. So, now, I'm just going to move through some of the questions we received, list of concerns. And so, I'm going to just go through them and you can read. If the program were to be taken offsite, how would you support the students? You remember, we considered doing something offsite, we abandoned that, so it's not possible. If CBS is going to do an advertising or logo on the building, people are assuming there's medications inside. Basically, they're wondering how we're going to keep our students safe. And I do this nice little statement, says we work very hard to keep our students safe. And then Tom reminded me, we have a veterinary clinic that actually has, CBS will do simulation pills and simulation bottles, nothing real, but the veterinary clinic actually has medications on site, and they went through a whole bunch of training about how to safely store and manage those, and we luckily have not had any issues with that, so I feel good about that. How are staff and students going to be protecting against someone, oh, who's drug-seeking? I just answered that. Splitting it into two sections, medical assisting versus, they say CNA, but it's health assisting. Splitting the shop would be detrimental. I, we believe splitting the shops would bring more opportunities to more students. That's the bottom line. By splitting the shop, you're taking away valuable certifications from the students, the same ones that you value being able to offer them and as a selling point to them during store sales. Okay. That's not the intent. We've been talking a lot about, could we maintain the list of certification all the way across? If the teachers decide, there's not enough time for it, we think this track speaks to this certification more, that's a, that's an instructive decision, and I think it's, I think it's going to be fine. But right now, we don't have any plans to remove certification opportunities from any of them. But they will have to be very clearly communicated to ninth grade students who are choosing their shop. They're limiting opportunities for jobs, if it's one or the other. I believe just the opposite. I think that we are effectively preparing them for multiple career pathways this way. Some of the proposed certifications are ones that don't seem to be possible to teach in high school setting. We would only ever propose something that is doable in a high school setting. And you can kind of go back to that if you want to take that eligibility quiz, it's kind of interesting. This person followed up, if you want to be a licensed surgical tech, there's so much more you have to do. True. Ideally, what you'd have to do is make that new facility or Monty Tech an accredited surgical technician training location, which could be done, actually, if you have this beautiful new spot and all the right equipment. But let's not think about that for high school students. What an opportunity for our school of continuing ed, though, in those adult learners. So, that might be something to think about. Medical coder, has to have a high school diploma, not for the organization that we currently certify. Same for EKG, nope. We can do it if you're within 12 months of having your high school diploma. Okay, so that's all EKG, we're good. Are the current health, oh, this is a good question. Are the current health occ students going to be made to choose a path they want to continue on, or will you honor that they enter this shop with the understanding they would graduate with an opportunity to become certified both CNA and MA? Students who are in the shop will graduate from health occupations. That makes perfect sense. But what would happen is, beginning Fall 27th, that's when you'd see the split, so FY 28 you'd see the split happen, and then students would start to choose health assisting and medical assisting. So, until then, it remains health occupations. Is anyone on the school, the school board speaking to the students to see if they want this to happen? I can't answer for you, but I feel like this has always been a district-level decision when you're talking about money, like the investment that you'd have to make, a grant that has to be developed. So, I don't know if anybody's speaking to students about it. Are they okay with being moved off campus, if they're not being moved off campus? And then, somebody was very, very concerned about missing day-to-day activities, and it's only 43 feet off our building, so I don't think they're going to miss any. I think, I think that's it. Okay. All right.
Go, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. And then finally, did all this talk about health assisting and medical assisting, but let's really not forget about a really cool program that would also come in if we were to get this approved, public safety. Take a minute, if you have time tonight, and just read these slides. These are quotes that I pulled right out of letters that they sent to us to support the public safety program, and I love what they have to say. People really, really excited about it. Talking about, like, so it's one thing for our Mass Hire to notice medical assistance are necessary, but it's another thing to hear right from Woods Ambulance or Pittsburgh Fire Department about how they're really, really hungry for a trained workforce. So, these are good quotes. And then finally, like I said, I just polled the seventh and eighth graders, 37.3% of them selected as their top choice, criminal justice, public safety, and then the next in their first was the 17.8. Second question was, how, what's your second choice of the program that you would want? And it was almost all of them were medical assisting. So, it was great to see the two programs that we're hoping that they would say, they didn't backside.
All right. Please direct your questions to the chair. Mr. Raymond?
Thank you. The question is, we're at 1,420. Is this going to expand how big the school is in a sensible, because you're talking adding on programs, that means we're going to be bringing more kids in overall, correct?
Correct.
So, what happens to the academic side of it? Because, I mean, my understanding is the academic side, they're pretty tight now. Why would not? Are we looking at having more teachers and stuff to accommodate the additional shops?
So, we are tight, but one of the things you have to keep in mind is, with Health Oc moving out to the new facility, that opens up the whole first floor on one side of Building One, that we could potentially convert into just regular academic classrooms.
It's easily a space for four classes.
Right. Space is one thing, but hiring people to teach is another option. How many, how many academic teachers would we have to add on?
It's hard to tell, because, as you know, we have classes that there might be 20 kids in the class, there might be 27 kids in the class, there might be 12 kids in the class. So, there's, there is flexibility in the schedule. Will we absolutely have to look at hiring some additional staff? Yes, certainly. But keep in mind that half the reason you do this is those students who are coming in, now we're getting Chapter 70 money for all those students.
Yeah.
And all those students coming in are going to be increasing the opportunity. And we're going to show you some of those numbers.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay. My concern is, I'm granted bringing in more shops and expanding availability at the school. And I like the idea it's on-site, but I think the thing is, there's other hidden costs here that I haven't even talked about.
Tammy and I get the cost part, so we won't be talking about it.
All right. I'll give that to you. I'll give that to you.
Increase of numbers.
Mr. Olson, any questions?
I have a bunch, but I actually didn't have my end up yet.
I want to go around the room. Everybody's shot here. I'm skipping Scott and Calvin, because they are going to present.
Understood. So, this, this portion of the presentation is really about the program selection that we would look to expand our CTE with, right? That's kind of the focus.
Correct.
So, we would, and you said 20 students would be the target expansion of the health program today per grade?
Per grade, yes.
If we look at the last three years of Health Oc student choices, it doesn't quite cover that. We've had, at least the last two years, first-choice students greater than seating capacity of 27.
35, yeah.
Right? So, we've done upwards, 35, 35. Year before, I think it was actually right on target at 27, so it's close. We have other shops, though, that are higher overcapacity more consistently. What was the choice of Health Oc being the one to expand versus some of the other trades, plumbing, carpentry, that have much larger over-interest in poll? Just curious how we thought about between Vet Tech, draw in, change up demographic and student population?
Yeah.
And it's only 20, I mean, public safety will bring in an additional amount, which I didn't.
20 per grade level. So, you're assuming, yeah, so you're assuming 80 students when, when medical assisting is running full bore, and then you're assuming another 80 students for, for public safety. And right now.
But that's, that's the expansion would be 20 students per grade?
160 students. Well, yeah, so times four, so 160 students would be the overall enrollment expansion. And back to your question about why we chose medical assisting, there's so many shops here that are in high demand, and, but when you have a grant in front of you and you have to really consider what the grant agent is asking you to consider, and a lot of it is, refer back to your Mass Hire blueprint document, refer back to how you can, how can I document that there's an immediate workforce need? They're never going to list dispatchers in any of this document. But oddly enough, they changed the name from criminal justice to public safety, and when you start flipping through the new frameworks of public safety, it's got a very health-oriented community service slant on it. So, you go, I can kind of nestle that one in there with healthcare, which is the one that will get us a grant. So, if we, if we have any chance of expanding enrollment at Monty Tech through this avenue, you have to do it, you kind of have to play in the sandbox, right? So, Mass Hire is saying, your top critical industry around here is healthcare. We have teachers who are already licensed to teach it. We have an incredible program already. We're not trying to upset a good thing. We're trying to expand it and enhance it and make it available to more students. I looked at that historical data to see what makes sense. Taking in 27 students, that's a lot of students, right? So, if you take in 27 students, Health Oc every class, that's a lot. But if you go, okay, you're going to take 20 health assisting, and you're going to take 20 medical assisting, and now you've got a very manageable amount, do I think you're going to saturate the market with CNAs and medical assistance? No, I don't. I definitely think there's going to be job demand for it. I think it's the appropriate thing to do. I think construction trades, you're right, there's, there's some internal demand for it, but I can't find outside Massey Energy Center, which they do fund construction trades, I can't find a lot of funding for that right now. So, this works for this funding stream. Did I come close to you? Good enough.
I mean, again, it was more how we're, how we're choosing the shops to expand.
Yeah.
Public safety, I think anybody here knows that's been an item for a long, long time that we'd love to find and talk about several different ways to expand that we want to talk about this for need, interest, desire, and value, and broad appeal. And for sure, there's a definite need for medical assisting on any question.
Yeah.
Like, we could have all the seats here and that, it would be not going to be needed for them. The question is, do they want to do it? That's my question.
So, that's why we partner like.
Are you going to get enough people to pick it?
Yeah, so that's why we partner like pharmacy tech. When I'm talking to CBS, they say, we'll come in and we'll brand out the pharmacy and we'll, you know, so that recognition. You're trying to peak interest on a variety of different career pathways. I don't know if it'll work. I think it will. And like I said, if they already have 35 students choosing them as their number-one choice for that one program, do I think you could easily build two programs, max 40 students with top choice? I think you could do that. Especially if it's in a shiny new building with all these great old teachers. That's always going to be a nice help in the first few years.
Ms. Quinn?
I don't have any questions yet.
Mr. Bressard, I have a couple of questions, but I'm more interested in what's coming.
The bank is in money.
But February 26th, construction begins at best-case scenario, and we have to be ready by end of May.
May, June.
So, you're talking a 15-month construction period, a third of which is winter conditions.
It's going to be great, Bill. It's going to be great. Mr. Bressard?
Very optimistic. And also, my count, we have 54 currently in health assisting and 54 currently in?
No, 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 we have, so when I say that, I mean, like juniors and freshmen, one week, combined 54.
So, currently, how many students in health assist?
Well, currently, right now, there's 81, because that's only sophomores through seniors. They haven't placed their junior, or their freshman yet. So, right now, there's 81 students enrolled, and there's going to be about another 27 added one. So, we're talking about 108 when they're enrolled.
Okay. So, that's like 54 each, basically?
Yes.
If you would have spread it in half today?
Yes.
And we're going to go to 80 each?
We're going to go to 80 in one shop, and 80 in the other, right? So, we'll have a total of 160 students enrolled in Allied Healthcare.
So, you're picking up 52 seats?
Yeah.
In that?
Over the four years.
Plus 80 for public safety?
Yes.
So, a total of 132 seats.
I'm picking up actually 160, so it's quite a guess. I see what you're doing there. You're actually doing the right math. But we're going to, we're going to enroll an additional 160 students. We're not going to let 27 of them pick health assisting. We're going to cap that at 20, because we've got to cap the new program at 20, because it's new. We don't want to overwhelm them with anything. So, they shouldn't have 27 over here while these people have 20 over here. Let's start them both fresh, 20 without assisting, 20 with medical assisting.
Okay.
Yeah. And you have to remember that the enrollment starts slow. You don't just all of a sudden enroll 160 more students. So, the first year, you take in 40 more, the next year, 80.
Mr. Barber, any questions?
Wow, we went all the way, right? No, no, I have an appreciation for, it looks like there was a big sample to change, change the project. An appreciation of how much effort that is, and it's a great idea to bring it on campus. That would have been a, that would have been a definite no for me to do off-campus. But I'm interested in the numbers, I guess, and that's, that's coming up, I guess.
Mr. Hurley?
We're going to have the potential of 160 students going into the new building, and...
And, yes, and health assisting would be in the building. So, we would have public safety almost on the bottom floor. We'd have health assisting and medical assisting. And then at night, we have LPN students in there, too. So, like, 50 LPN students, other continuing.
And I'm sure, I'm sure you're all aware of the letter that we received from the advisory board?
We'll hear from the committee chairs.
We will.
From Mr. Burks, Mr. Corrigian, once we've gotten through the presentation.
Did you hear the advisory chairs? No.
No, he's talking about the shop, the program advisory.
The program advisory?
That's where I got those questions.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's where the questions came from?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's all right. I just pulled the questions right from that, just to make sure that we are, because I know everybody here received the same email with all their concerns.
Okay. I wasn't aware that's where the questions came from.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
How many, how many students will be leaving the wing here where the health assistant and medical assistant is now?
Well, so, right now, we're talking about probably, on average, 100 students, right, would be in all four grade levels in health occupations, on average, on a level. But that's 3,846 square feet.
Yeah.
Would be vacated, that you could potentially turn into, you know, academic classrooms, or you could relocate a different shop there. There's a lot of.
Now, we could potentially bring in another trade?
No, I, well, now, wait a second. I mean, that's not for me to decide.
No, I, I know.
A lot of things are there for that, but I will say, you will need academic classrooms, and that, that, it's an ideal space, to have almost four thousand square feet kind of freed up when you need that kind of space, it makes sense to create four, four-grade classrooms, you know?
All right, so the bottom line is, we have fourteen hundred and forty students presently at Monty Tech. When this is all done, what's our total gonna be?
Tammy will report how much, right? Tammy with the numbers?
Sixty-five.
So you're adding a hundred and sixty to that?
We're, we're adding a hundred and sixty for a five-million-dollar building.
Well, I mean, no, you're adding a hundred and sixty for a five-million-dollar grant opportunity, with a one-million-dollar promise if you receive it, and an investment, which is where, where we really, this is where you kind of decide, do you want your school district to grow or not?
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be negative at all, I'm looking at public perception. It's five million dollars to increase our population by one hundred and sixty.
Every year.
Yeah? No, one hundred and sixty total. Not, it's not every year, we won't get a hundred and sixty students every year.
Well, you'll, you're increasing-
You'll cycle through.
Forty.
Yeah.
Forty per year.
Well, forty per year until you get it, to that be one hundred and sixty mark, and then after that, or I said-
But the number of, the number of kids coming into Monty Tech-
Yes.
Will be forty from the entire district every year.
Yeah, we're actually gonna have a slide that's gonna look at how, how those numbers change. Uh, I'm gonna have it coming up right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, yeah.
Yeah. Well, has the contractor said he can build this building for five million dollars?
No, 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 okay. This is, I, listen, I'm the idea girl, and I'm the grants person, and I think this is a great idea, don't get me wrong, but I do recognize that there has to be some skin in the game. So when you are reading this guidance document, they say, uh, you can include up to seventy percent of your grant application, a five-million-dollar application, can, up to seventy percent of it can be construction costs.
Okay.
That's great. So I can put three-point-five million dollars into the budget, construction costs, and then I can put one-point-five million dollars in as equipment, which is actually what you need for equipment for all of these shops. So that's fine, but then you go, where's the rest of this money coming from? Because it's a twenty-thousand-square-foot building, and it's gorgeous, but it's a twenty-thousand-square-foot building, and right now, construct, and right now, who knows what's gonna happen like a month from now, but construction is running anywhere from four to five to six-hundred-dollar a square foot. So our architect said, we're gonna land at five-hundred-dollar a square foot, you can plant on a ten-million-dollar facility, then you gotta remember contingencies and all the other things that kind of go with it. I mean, our architect planned for how much it would cost to build that retaining wall and extend that parking into the grassy spot, so that we wouldn't lose any parking, occasionally. We would actually have five more spots per his overall plan.
What could cost us fifty million to build it?
No, it's not that high, it's not that high, it's there, it's there.
Well, do you have a, do you have a, a ballpark?
I just, I don't have it with me, but it is, it's supposed to be ten million dollars plus contingencies, but I'm telling you, he wrote in a million dollars in parking lot, I can't do anything with that, right?
So we don't know what to sort of, all right.
Yeah, we, we still need to do the whole final design piece and everything.
Yeah, so if you also, if you get the grant, that's when you go out to bid, so our Boston architect that's coming in with these numbers will be very different numbers if a local team is doing it too.
If we got the grant and we find out the construction costs are so astronomical that we couldn't afford it, would we change our mind?
That's not my decision to make.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
What's the number we could, what's the number we could say, yes?
Can, can I, I, I'm sorry, I keep putting you off, but we do have all the slides on the financing and everything else coming up, so, uh, we'll show you that, and that's, that's really a question for the committee. We, Tammy and I will show you what we've, what we've learned about if we're gonna try to finance these costs. Obviously, that means we're incurring debt and we're paying it off.
Based on what?
What do you mean, based on what?
The numbers you're gonna have.
The number-
Is it gonna be fifteen million to build this?
So we went with about ten million, but, but we're also factoring in, we also, don't forget one thing we haven't talked about that's part of this puzzle, is the athletic complex.
Point of origin, Mr. Chairman, what's the point of origin? I understand we need to talk about the money, but I kind of thought right now we were talking about the grant and the program and all of that, and then we're gonna cycle back to the money.
Isn't the whole idea of getting a grant, talking about money?
Yes, sir, it is. But, but we have that.
That's part of the superintendent's presentation. We will talk about that later.
John?
I'm Dr.
Dr. Corrigian, anything you want?
I'm just listening.
Okay. Ms. Marsha?
I'm just listening.
Ms. Jones?
So, I have a seventh and eighth grader, they both took the surveys, um, so they both participated in these percentages. I do think that if the list was bigger, you might have seen different numbers. Neither of my children were thrilled with these options. Um, however, our sending district also sent out similar lists applying for the additional grant, so very much aligned with that. Um, one of my bigger questions, obviously, getting that email as regards to the off-campus, has anybody talked to Vet Tech to see how they feel about being off-campus but still close in regards to, you know, do they still feel included? I know that last year there was an issue with, like, implement weather days and them getting to the cafeteria, would there be similar issues going that way, and, and how are the students feeling that, are we doing this?
So I, I haven't specifically talked to, actually, one of the instructors in health suggested, I do.
Okay.
But that was when we were talking about being way off.
Yes.
And then we think, okay, we're gonna be on the grassy spot, and then we think, no, we can bring it even closer, and we're forty-three feet from the building now, and that is true, it's further away. Um, and that was designed specifically that way because of the public interaction that happens in that shop, and there's a lot of pet allergies, and there's a million reasons that that happened out there. Um, and I, I have heard that there are times when they love the independence, they love the fact that they're operating a full-service clinic, and it feels like kind of what you want, like, for me, in a vocational administrator, I, I think that's what you want in a vocational experience, you really want your students kind of embedded in, right? Like, this is what it feels like to, to work in a veterinary clinic, right? Um, but they're also high school kids, right? They also do need to get to the nurse, and they do wanna get to the cafeteria without their air, you know, being taken. So I, I get that, but that, that did not, that didn't really have a bearing on how we decided that location. It did have a bearing on how we decided to pull this one as close as we possibly could without attaching it to the building and then setting off all kinds of flags for needing to spend millions of dollars to spring another place.
Yeah, so I don't like, from being a graduate from this school, being a part of the tech community is a big part of why our kids come here, and, yes, as both students are friendly with people in their shops, you also form those other outside shop communities, so if your shop week, you don't get to interact with those kids because you can't make it to Melindrum, that, that has a big impact on-
I don't think that, I, I, I'm not trying to push back in any weird way, but I don't think our veterinary students haven't been able to get to lunch, that would be really bad.
Yeah, they always get to lunch.
Yeah, I know, and I think, I think the comment that they made was that some of them chose to stay in on those implement other days-
Yeah.
Because they didn't wanna venture out, so-
Okay, I see, I see that, yeah.
And it, yes, it's their choice that they're making, but they're still having to make the choice that our other students that the shops are in there aren't apt to make.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, this is a sixty-year-old building, it was designed, and it is what it is, and so I just, like, my job is development coordinator, right?
Yeah.
So it's grant writing and it's developing new programs, and the idea is, there's only so much developing you can do on a building that you can't attach, you can't, you can't expand. So the fact is, we either gonna have to do satellite campuses, or we're gonna have to do standalone buildings, or we're not gonna grow as a facility, as a school, as a district, and we're not gonna have extra enrollment, added, added revenues, there's just a lot that kind of comes with that decision. Um, I hear you and I understand, and I appreciate that perspective, but I, but I have to believe that, like, if you're offering a really awesome opportunity to a hundred and sixty more students, and the state is looking at six schools, or they were looking at six schools across the state, who have these huge weight lists, Monty Tech being one of them, I had not heard any other grant writer say that they're proposing anything that's gonna have a hundred and sixty seats. So this is a huge endeavor, but what about to a hundred and sixty students? Yeah, it's not as comfortable as it would be if you were in Cosmo right down the hall, but they have a shining new place, so I don't, you know, maybe it's a little bit of a trade-off, I don't know.
Mrs. Swenson?
Yeah, a couple of things that we keep forgetting about, um, one, for years, I've been on here a long time, we've always talked about, we need to add more programs, we need to add more programs, needless to say, but everybody seemed to be excited when we added that science, and, and that's been wonderful, as we can all know of. In current days, the state is state, stated, has stated, that they, uh, pardon me, because I could sort of be crazy, so most doesn't know what. Um, the state is saying that they want to commit to adding three thousand more seats in vocational schools, or vocational settings, uh, over the next three years. This would be a good part to it. The fact that we can, um, handle a fair amount, as Katie had just said, a fair amount of students compared to other schools may lead us to getting the grant more positively. Uh, these are high-activity locations that apparently are needed in this area, there's a lot of need for medical and health and things like that, we've got a very aging population, especially up in this area, um, and it's also some of the top, um, types of contests that are even being added in skills. Two or three of different types of medical or facility or public safety and enhanced criminal justice, et cetera, is being added to skills, which just tells me that it's the same demands starting to go across the country. So even for some reason, our kids decided to move to Minnesota, they'd be fine, you know, in, in doing something like this. I did spend, and again, it's true, I did say, when I went to Thursday meeting, I said, um, I gotta tell you, I was up, because I was on the capital improvements meeting, I was up till after midnight last night, pros and cons, pros and cons, digging out stuff from D C, finding out what's the frameworks, what's this, compared, thank you for the comparison, I haven't done that yet, um, and all of this, and then searching some other schools to see what they were doing, and, um, I found who went to vet, it looked, I don't know, a lot of something, and to get up in time to go, so I talked to him about it, and I said, I think that there was so few people on the, on the joint committee compared to what, twenty-two, um, you know, our, our, we really, I don't really feel now that I'm doing due justice as a school committee member if I'm not allowing the rest of the committee, or as many as could possibly be here. It's such a touch, uh, short timeline, we can't wait to go to the school committee, so, and then I talked to John, and everything was going, and yes, we're gonna go for a special meeting, so it's nice to have it broken down, and you get to hear everything about the grants, I recognize some questions that you had answered on there, so I knew where you gathered from, um, and then it'll be discussion for the finance. If we don't start adding to the Monty Tech community and keep it at fourteen, forty, that's gonna be it forever, because you cannot add to the building, you have to be detached to add and increase this, or you tear down this building, and now you're spending seven-hundred-and-eighty million dollars for a building, which would never fly in, in the towns or anything else. So the only option we have, and everybody agrees, having Monty Tech students off-site is not appropriate. More M V P programs may be appropriate coming down the road, that we control and, and work with to get it, so they're getting at least our standards of what we require as vocational school. Um, but Monty Tech students, we feel should be on the campus, and, um, I know it's hard to not always be every place, but even at that, I'm sure some of the kids don't see other kids because they're one end of the floor to the other end of the floor, so they'll, they'll find a way for it. Um, but I'm very glad to have this meeting, I'm glad to hear more of the details, which we really didn't have a lot of details at our meeting, and then the finance can be discussed afterwards, it's going to be expensive, but we either do it for the students, increasing the value of Monty Tech, or we decide we're in a dying off world.
All right, just to maybe, uh, expand what Diane said, uh, there's a joint meeting, obviously, two subcommittees. Basically, subcommittees have one function, to report back to the committee as a whole, so in order to approve this grant, it was necessary to have this special meeting tonight. All right? Mr. Brown, you're up.
All right, um, let's see, uh, yeah, thank you, Donnie. All right, so, oh, I had it and then I'm gone, Donnie.
Nice bird.
Yes. That is a North American Watuosi, and, um, it's a lovely bird.
It flew up.
You had it for one second there, Donnie. Okay, um, so, Julie, did they get this presentation on Board Docs?
No.
All right, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, so this is underneath my superintendent's report, I guess, on Board Docs. So, um, it seems like it's a disconnected thing, but obviously, if we're talking about doing, uh, construction, renovation, whatever you wanna call it, it just so happens, I talked about this at the last school committee meeting, um, we had already been putting plans into doing, uh, the athletic complex, which includes, uh, the track, uh, the football field, and the bleachers, um, so there is a proposal, we've already been working with Gail to do this design, this was the, the design they came up with. The track, as we all know, has already been deemed unusable, um, just because of its age and, and things they tried to do. Uh, Mike and his crew tried to do patches and everything else, that wasn't gonna do it or anything else like that. So what we're looking to do is to correct the track, first off, the track is backwards, as weird as that sounds, um, the field isn't large enough, uh, it needs to be wider to, to, in order for varsity soccer to be played on it. Um, the bleachers, folks, you've sat in them, you've seen them, they're pretty old, and I don't know what word I'd use to describe it besides that. Um, and for what it's worth, part of it is ADA stuff. Uh, the press box technically needs to be ADA compliant, which means you're looking at installing either a very weird ramp system, or what's more likely what we would do, and we have in our current design would be an elevator, um, for that. But anyhow, so we, we have the design, uh, to the left side here, you can see the timeline that, uh, has been kind of put in place by our, our partners, Gail, um, and what they'd be looking at is, we'd be looking at, uh, going through all the design work, all the permitting work with, uh, obviously, that's the Westminster end of the building, so be working with Westminster, uh, agencies, uh, looking at how we could do this different work. We would be able to get graduation in, um, in May, and then we'd have to do all the work through the fall, so football would have to be, the football season, we'd have to look at a place and try to do something that was different, someplace else. Um, I just gave you the, the major categories, I didn't give you the full, uh, necessary breakdown for the PowerPoint, um, so you can see where the, that the total cost is coming from. There are three categories we think are definitely, uh, malleable, for lack of a better phrase. Um, the, the plan we have currently calls for synthetic turf, as you know, uh, actually, the state of Massachusetts was propos, was considering to propose no more synthetic turf fields at high schools anymore. Um, frankly, I think it's mostly because of the injuries, the number of injuries that happen on synthetic fields, so we could consider, if we didn't wanna necessarily do this as a synthetic field, that might bring that, bring that price down. Um, there are significant, uh, not significant, but there are additional costs that Mike talked about that, just putting in the field, so it's not gonna be the entire nine-hundred-thousand that goes on, goes away, but that could be probably cut down into half, maybe even a little bit less. Um, they put in, you know, benches and goals and stuff, you know, soccer goals, we, we have that stuff, so the fifty-four thousand there, we could probably take care of. And the other thing is, we all certainly took a blink when we saw the one-hundred-thousand-dollar scoreboard, we're su, we're assuming that's a message board that's gonna have videos and fire, you know, fireworks shooting out of it. We, we don't need a hundred-thousand-dollar scoreboard, so we think we can save some money there. But still, overall, with contingency and everything else, you're still talking somewhere probably in the mid-three-million-point-five, three, three-point-six million or something like that. And we just kind of put that in the back of our mind, because that's work that needs to get done. During the meeting with the, uh, joint committees, uh, actually, I believe it was Eric, brought up the, the other side of things, of, you know, we're excited to the opportunity for us to be taking more students, um, but Eric was saying, you know, is there a plan, or are we, are we looking at what then happens to the, um, to the sending districts in terms of the number of students? So what we basically did is we took this year's, what would've been the, the percentages that we used of school-aged children to determine the quota for this year, and we basically just applied it to as we're adding students. You can see up top, we didn't go with the pure forty, eighty, uh, one-twenty, because one of the things that's a kind of a quirk that Katie spoke to, is currently, health occupations has twenty-seven kids, twenty-six kids in there, so the number isn't pure, so we just kind of brought it down a couple of numbers, because those would necessarily be new students, because our current shops already have twenty-seven kids and everything else. Um, but basically, you can see, that's how it would play out, um, you know, in terms of as we, uh, add students going across, um, during those particular years and everything else. Um, so I know Eric had asked about that, so I wanted to make sure that we included that in this presentation. Financing piece, I'm gonna kind of turn it over to Tammy, we'll work together, uh, but basically, what I'll give you is, um, we had already been partnered with, uh, a group, NGL, out in Minnesota, where you just worked, very good, um, but, um, they specifically work and focus on municipal financing, uh, for projects like this. Um, we had a great conversation with, with the folks from there, and- And we thought, okay, as we move forward, let's take a look at what particular financing might come in order to satisfy these issues. So we got different financing opportunities. So the first one was, okay, that 3.6 million that we talked about specifically for the fields. If we did a standalone, 3.6 million for 10 years. And Tammy, you can kinda explain what the TLP is and everything else.
So the TLP is Tax Exempt Lease Program. So that's the same financing we did for the $10 million rooftop unit. So essentially, what it is, is that you're leasing to purchase the capital equipment. So the financing component of it is not considered debt service or capital. It comes within your operating budget. So that's the way we do it without having to get approval all around ahead of time. It comes approval by our communities when we put our budget out there. So this lending, much like we put the TLP up there that we currently have for the rooftop to show you how much we pay when that goes away, that fits within our operating budget. So that comes off of our net school spending requirement. So you can see the current help we have from the rooftop unit, $790,000 per year. It will be paid off after October of 2029. And then we're done paying now. This first slide shows if we borrowed 3.6 million for the athletic field only over 10 years. It's $477,375 per year for those 10 years. And that's the length of time, that's the longest length of time we could do the field. So we would have to fit that $477 into our net school spending operating budget. So the second slide, or this slide, so going up to the top, we, the top number that I say inflation factor. So what happens is each year, your foundation budget is increased by, OSD comes out with an inflation factor each year. Well, I know for 2025, '26, it was 1.93%. We know moving forward for FY '27, it's gonna be 3.04%. Some years, some years, we've seen it go slightly higher. Some years, we've even seen negative inflation factors. This, those rates dictate how the foundation budget per pupil rises or decreases. We put in our foundation enrollment. Now remember, that's not just kids, go back to my budget presentation. That's not just kids here at Monty Tech. That's all the kids we get credit for. Kids here at Monty Tech, kids here at School Choice O, LPN students. So that's what goes into that 1488. So we took what our foundation budget per pupil was for '25, '26, the current year, to show you our foundation budget. So we know what next year's foundation inflation rate is, 3.04%. Now, I don't anticipate any large increase or decrease because we still have the same enrollment here. It just depends on outside enrollment. So for sake for that, we just kept it at the same 1488. But we increased the foundation budget by 3.04%. So that comes up with what approximate our foundation budget will look like. Now remember, foundation budget is synonymous with net school spending. So it's important to show you that number when we tell you we're gonna borrow to fit inside that number. So you can see that then I just did a flat 2% inflation factor down because if I had a crystal ball, I'd hit mega millions tomorrow. But I don't, so I just did a flat 2% for FY '27. That would be when we would get the first students in the increased, if we got the grant, went forward. But that wouldn't hit our foundation budget money-wise till the next year. So fiscal '29. So again, that's just, and then we added the 72, you know, 36, 72, or added 36 more kids, 36 more kids, kept going down the line. So you can kind of get a feel for the foundation budget numbers. Now, additional of the, this pinkish section is, again, a projection, first year the kids have, what could we expect approximately in additional funds from the student increase? 800, 1.6, 2.5, 3.4. So you could kinda see, back to Diane's conversation about we're starting to see more funds come in, help fund these programs for them. The next section below is, again, the TLP that we currently have. Then below that, you'll see it says CTE Expansion Building, $10.6 million. Well, that's if, that's actually 3.6 million for the field from the previous. And if we only had to borrow 7 million for the building, we think that's not gonna be the case. We're gonna have to go with a higher number that we got financing for. But just to show you some examples, this would be 10 years for both the field and the building. And then, oh, this is 10 years straight up, 1.405.
Yeah, it's the 20-year one that you get the flip.
Yep. So you can see by, you know, by year FY '30, your increase from chapter 74 pupils takes away the, it offsets kind of the debt piece, the debt piece.
72 students.
So then again, that's the same formula taught. And then this financing is 10.6 million. Tom?
Yep.
I think that's 10.6.
That's its 20-year term of reduction.
Yeah, it's 20-year term.
Oh, yes. So this is 10.6 at a 20-year term. So it's 10 years, both athletic field and building, and then another 10 with just the building left over. That's where you see this debt, 1,750, not counting the TLP. We're already even counting for that. So just looking at the new debt, so to speak. And again, that by FY '30, again, is offset. The new money, just the new money for those new kids offsets the debt. This is probably more the appropriate slide. Same, everything up top, borrowing 13.6 million. So 10 million for the building, 3.6 for the field. 10 years, both, 20 for the building. So you can do, you can borrow for the building over 20 years. We can't borrow for the field but 10. It's the life, life of the asset, really, for the financing focus. So that would be 1.4 million. So again, FY '30, that's when you offset pretty much the debt with the new kids. That's when you start to meet that point. I keep saying with the debt, because again, you have probably 3/4 of a million, you know, to operate it with the two public safety instructors, probably an additional custodian, heat utilities, et cetera, et cetera. You know, probably looking approximately 6, 700,000 to operate the building. So again, these numbers would be built in to the operating budget. We would still, well, it'd be up to you guys and your budget, but we'd still have to put capital. We'd still have to have $400,000 capital each year because we still have renovations to this building that have to get done. So we'd still be looking to them. So, you know, I've ran some very quick scenarios because, you know, it's like seeing into the future a little bit. But just building in this debt, 1.4, adding on increases to, we're going into collective bargaining. If I'm coming to the committee next week, preview, asking for a 12% insurance increase. And transportation increase, well, that's outside of it. But we're looking at possibly looking probably for about, if we put all the debt in, probably got an 8% budget increase. Or a 20, it would be about 20% increase to assessments. So again, that's where this is really important for the whole committee to hear.
I think that's it.
Yeah, Tammy?
Sir?
Just to clarify things in my own mind. This debt we incurred, are we gonna need town meeting approval from our member towns?
No. This is not considered debt like traditional debt. It's a tax exempt lease. So because it's inside our operating budget, we don't need permission from the towns to borrow. Where their approval would come into play is approving our assessment, that town meeting.
So we're gonna have a pretty substantial increase in our...
Yes, or we would have to make cuts to our current spending.
Yes, sir.
Tammy? One easy question. You've already answered part of it. So this is a 20-year lease, for lack of a better word, with like a dollar buyout at the end?
Yes, yeah.
And this part, I don't expect an answer anyway, but I would love to see the, that present value or the future value of the expense stream and the revenue stream. Like I said, I don't expect you to have it right now.
Thank you.
But I'd really like to understand it because, I don't know, we're not in business, but I'd like to understand what the ROI is, if you know what I mean.
All right. Do we have any questions for Tammy about the financing? This is the side.
On that, TLP?
Yes.
What's the effective interest rate?
So...
I calculated over 30%. I calculated over 30%.
No, it's approximately 6.
Okay, that sounds better.
Yeah.
A million, 430 for 10 years.
Yep.
On $10 million, on $13 million borrowed.
Yep.
Okay. It was 6%, what'd you say?
Yeah, so it's, so it's 10 years at 1,430,378 and 10 years at 691.
If we go with split amortization, if we go with the 1020?
Yes, yep. Because that would be the, I mean, you're paying back more interest that way, but you're less out of your budget per year.
And then the grant allows 3.5 million to go towards the construction. You're proposing borrowing 13, 10 to 13. Would the 3.5 offset the borrowing?
No.
It's in addition to the borrowing?
Yes.
So our total project building cost is 13 and 1/2 million?
But sorry, that 13 million includes the fields. Includes that, almost 4 million for the field. So it would be about borrowing 10 million for the building?
Okay.
Yep, plus the grant.
So the 10 plus the 3 and 1/2, so total building cost will be 13.5 and then another million and 1/2 for equipment and supplies?
And another $500,000 gift. So we would have $14 million for the building.
It'd be a $14 million building and $2 million in equipment and supplies.
It might not come in quite at 14 million.
But that would cover...
Right, but that would cover all those, yeah. That's our safe projection. Yeah.
But building in a kind of a contingency.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
The numbers we were looking at earlier for the athletic facility were 3.6 million with a potential for 4.58. You had said 900,000 was the turf. If we eliminate the turf, that's gonna take the $900,000 out of the budget. Don't we spend something for an alternative to turf?
Yes.
Yes, correct, but it's obviously cheaper than the turf. So Mike knows it better than I. There are specific techniques that we have to do simply to put down grass.
But that's not what we did. When you change the numbers from 3.6 to 4.5, you took that number right out of it.
Well, I think the 4.5 also includes the $900,000 contingency as well. Yeah, the 4.5 includes a $900,000 contingency.
4.5 did, yes.
Yes, yeah. So that, and that's where you definitely...
The 3.6 did not include that 900,000.
Correct.
Yes, but there's gonna be something there.
Oh, oh, like, the 3.6 includes the turf, the 900,000 for turf. It just doesn't include the 800,000 contingency. So the 3.6 includes turf.
Yes.
But it gets to 4.5 because they tack on 25%.
Can we go back to that slide?
Sure. So this 3.6 includes turf. You get to the 4.5 because they build in your contingency fund. Of, you know, overruns and whatnot.
Okay.
But if we cut out the turf, we would only save about 400,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, in all these costs, have we also looked at any potential future costs we're gonna be getting for 270 Westminster Street?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
We keep that, we track that separate.
Yes.
Well, we track that separate, but it's still gonna come out of our piggy bank.
Yeah, but yes, while we're tracking it right now to not come out of our piggy bank because this committee doesn't want us to use any full district funds on bill per second. So, yeah.
Don't want to see the real...
So we track it separate, yeah.
Chris, this is coming.
Anything else for Tammy? Yes, sir.
Someone, Julie, I think supplied us with a paper version of this Gail quote. Yeah, which is from October 24th. And it's actually 2.066 million prior to a 25% contingency, which as a banker is law.
Yeah.
10% is kind of standard for everything I've ever looked at. 25 is quite heavy.
Yeah, so whichever, the older one is definitely no longer, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, we're not using that one at all.
So this has no...
Yeah, that's, I must have given the wrong one to Julie. So that's, yeah, no, it's the, what was the date for the 20...
So the, the one that was handed out at the joint meeting has a date of October 14th of '25.
Yeah.
The one that was handed out tonight is October 18th of '24.
Yeah, so that must have been, so we'll try to get you guys, we'll get you guys the October 25 one.
How much is that one for, Kelly? The 3.5 or whatever?
This is 3.6 plus the 900.
So we will be getting the new one? Yes, I'll get you the new one. We'll post it on Board docs immediately after this.
All right. Maybe it's Tammy. If you looked at, or if you go to the last slide proposed, I guess the bigger concern is sort of the, me getting myself in a timeline here. If the program starts, we're funding students into the '28, '29 school year at that point? That's the 36 students would be, but we get paid, we get paid.
We get paid.
Yep.
So we would, if we added a line here of cost for running the programs in the grant, we said, here's a $700,000 add plus the 1.4. You're not even break even, right, for four plus years. The grant doesn't even cover the operating cost of the 5 million. The grant doesn't even cover the operating cost of the 5 million to even get close to that. So it's still a pretty big gap. Think about how we would bridge that in that short period of time, so.
Yeah, there's a couple...
I'm thinking of that right, I want to say it out loud to people listening because I'm like, okay, what am I missing here? It's like, that's $8 million worth of operating, I don't know, plus lease expenses that are covered out of non, you know, so just like before you're even getting the, there's a cash flow problem here. Right, that's all. That the grant doesn't cover and you would have to cover in a short period of time until you get to that, you know, and then, as Eric mentioned, there's clearly a long-term present value earned year situation at year 20 where you're like, yep, I've added 150 seats. I'm getting, you know, student enrollment covering that. But it's, it's the gap between it that really could hurt painfully in the budget, right? So maybe I'm missing something here.
No, I think you're, I mean, I, I want to know, how many years is, are we not able to cover the debt with the student, added student enrollment? Can you, how many years will we, how many years out does it take before our enrollment covers the debt we're assuming?
Well, so in 2030, you're looking at 1.6 million in potential additional revenue from those kids based on these projections. Now, I'm not counting the current help because that's already in place. And then you would offset the 1.4 million then, so.
You'd have more program expense still, you wouldn't break even till the next year.
Correct, correct.
But just so, and I didn't speak on this in the, in the grant presentation, but there is a section in the grant that said, um, program startup costs, it was up to $250,000. So I was able to write in salaries and fringe benefits for the instructors for that first year that's not generating any money, right? So it's small, like that's nothing compared to, but at least, you know, it's something. It's $250,000 that, that would, that would be received and spendable in '27, '28.
Yeah, to your point, yes, but we, we'd have a couple of years. We'd have to find closer to $2 million.
All right.
I have two other, two other questions if you don't mind, sorry. Just can't remember off the top of my head, maybe you do. Size of the building for that tech, cost of the building for that tech was what, what? And maybe how long?
7,000 square feet. Took three and a half years for students to build it.
Yep.
And $2 million in donations. And Tammy can tell you some, some costs here at the school. But I know that we ran through over $2 million in donations, three and a half years, and 7,000 square feet.
So $2 million, but the total building expense was $3 million?
Oh, wow.
I don't know, I'm talking, I'm on the top, no, because I've been so entrenched in these other numbers.
But you're also talking about, no, like...
Right, right, yeah, you're looking now at revealing range up to there.
I thought we were gonna get that number.
All right, we had, we had...
Oh, he's asking about the vet tech building. Oh, I can get it, I just have to look.
And I had the same question on 270 at this point. What's the total investment in rehabbing 270, not lease, in timeline from when we started to getting that done?
$1.9 million grant.
How much was it?
$1.9 million grant.
Okay.
And that included $600,000 worth of equipment for two shops, correct? Maybe 650. So probably $1.2 million for the infrastructure side of it. And that took two years, a year and a half, two years to build.
Probably seven, 800, 700,000, yeah.
And they clean...
More speculative.
All right, we said, okay. We had a joint meeting last week with capital and finance. Scott, you want to tell us what you guys came up with?
Yeah. So our capital improvements met, particularly obviously with the time. And we looked at two major things. One is the sports complex replacement. That's something we had talked about even last year. This, maybe it was going to happen sooner than later. Obviously, there are safety concerns out there. We really can't use it for much of anything. So I think the committee felt like we needed to move forward with getting more information and really probably supporting that moving forward. So we did vote to go forward to get bid documents put together, finding some arrangements to get us more information on that. As we talked about, it's somewhere between 3.5 to 4.5 million dollars, give or take. Hard to say, even if you went turf versus grass, still some expenses there. So that's considerable. Secondly, we were talking about the expansion grant. I think when we had that meeting a week ago, we met and did this, it'll probably lose information we even have today. We had a whole one pager more or less looking at 601 River Street and then potentially having that built with a different campus. Sort of talk those things through. And I think the consensus was it was important to keep it here on campus. And I think that's where it's moved, which is great. And then, you know, certainly looking at the overall expense of doing that. We talked about $10 million plus, looking at putting that building up, looking at, you know, potentially furnishing it afterwards, staffing it, all those things. Laying on top of that, the need for other capital improvements moving forward that we haven't forecasted necessarily. And sometimes things come up. And I think the committee felt a little jittery about that, quite honestly. Not really, I think that we had enough information. The grant sort of has set this up to some degree because it's sort of rushed. It's already, you know, quick turnaround here on this grant, getting these together. And I think potentially we would have felt better if we had more time, more information to put this together. And you start to talk about spending, you know, $10 million, $15 million, whatever happens today. You know, certainly looking at the potential 20% increase to the assessments is, is really a huge number. You know, I'd go look at, you have Congress sort of at regional schools decision, what that potential impact to that school system is if we start to bring students here from there. I know they're already having problems there trying to keep their schools built. So that's a concern. So at the end of the day, we just decided to sort of have no action on the item of the, the expansion grant, the potential building here on 601 River at that point in time. And that's kind of where the discussion ended.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you. And if I may just add to what was said, looking at it more from a financial planning point of view, we talked about the athletic complex first. And I think there was a consensus that that's, that we needed to go forward with that. That could be worked into the budget and would still allow, give us some room to do other things that we needed to do. The, as we moved on to the CTE grant, there were a lot of questions. The whole process is rushed and that's, that's a concern. And I'm gonna say the unintended consequences, one of which was if you moved, if we had gone to 601 River Street, what does that mean and the implications on that? And so just kind of talking this all through, the, the question that was raised from, from my standpoint was, can we work this into the budget? And if we do, we're really putting a strain on the budget. And it will more likely, if, and if we stay at about net, net minimum plus funding, it would put a severe strain on the, the school budget, especially as it relates to capital spending. And so I think at the time, we just, we, we didn't take any action because there didn't seem, seem to be a need because we basically would have had to bring it back to the committee. And there was some question as to whether we could in fact pull this meeting together. I think the fact that we did is, is good. If I've thrown out during the meeting, it's because I've heard some of this already once before, so. So I think, I think from my part of the committee's concern is, can, can we afford it in the sense that can it, can it be worked into the budget? And I'm gonna say, okay, that's my report. And then I'm gonna stop there, okay?
All right, Tammy?
And I'll just say the caveat is the 20% increase would be across all assessments being, that's a really, yes. So, I mean, I put numbers in play, but again, not knowing what the required minimums are gonna be for next year, et cetera, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
I, forgive me because I may have just messed this up in my own head. The 20% for assessments is not 20% per city and town. It's 20% overall and then it's broken down per the percentages.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Who?
Yes, yes, not per.
I have a question. Does anyone have any questions, these two gentlemen, regarding finances? Okay. Do we have anything else to discuss before we go to the vote? Anybody want to add anything else? Yes?
I just kind of want to make an overview summary. The field definitely need to be done. That can be brought up also at the next school committee meeting, even though it is tied in with all of this. Again, like I said before, we may not get the grant. And we may get the grant plus additional donations that start kicking in because people are excited about this. Even if we went back to some of the wonderful people that have provided grants to the vet science program because they really liked money tech. And maybe there's, there's more there for grants. We can just keep our fingers crossed. So one is, would we even get the grant? And then two, you know, what would we get for donations? The athletic field is not part of this grant. So that is something that's gonna be coming out of our pockets anyhow. It's a hard decision to make.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Conover?
Yeah, two things. One, one will be unpopular, the other one will be... So I always like to think, yeah, I always like to think about what is, what is our core mission? Our core mission is to educate students and get them productive in the workforce. So when I look at spending $4 million on the field, even if it's needed, I don't think it's needed. However, I understand why there's a desire for it. So I just wanted to share the thought on that. But on the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Katie, you may have that right here on this one. There's a tendency in public construction to overpay. Overpay because some of those state regulations, but also because of the intent to make things pretty and fancy looking. But sometimes you just need to be functional. And if we're functional, that building might be cheaper. There's something to consider, I should tell the architects if we get to that point.
Sure.
Can I throw something out there?
What's that?
Can I throw something out there? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, folks?
What I just want to say, folks, is it is clear that the guiding mission right now when it comes to vocational education for DESI is to see expansion of programs and expansion of seats. I think this was a proposal, or this is a proposal, that obviously addresses those needs. Like Katie did a fantastic job putting the whole thing together. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good thing to do. I understand financial numbers are a little bit different. But at some point, and I don't know when that time comes, but at some point, I think the district's gonna be disappointed if we're not taking opportunities like this and doing something. So maybe right now, the vibe I'm getting is that maybe right now is not that time. But if it's not that time, if they do put this out next year, we really need to think about doing this. Because again, the state wants to see this. We've been complaining about not being able to, to expand and everything else. This is an opportunity where we get that. And again, we all know that if we want to try to go do an MSBA project for a full building, that ain't happening. That ain't happening. So I just, I just want people to think about that a little bit, that's all.
To that point, Tom, if we went to MSBA with a project similar to what we're proposing here, in addition to our current school that could house 10, 20, 30,000 square feet, whatever it was, and more time to develop that and bring it to them, how much would they fund of that?
It, it depends. So when I was Principal Lord Lomitster, we, we went to MSBA specifically for purpose. We had two temporary spaces that were science labs. And we needed way more science labs. And we proposed, okay, MSBA, can we do a standalone building? It, it's connected, but it was essentially a standalone building. Get four science labs. It was originally a $12 million project for that. When we were talking to MSBA, when they came and walked through, they said, well, all this stuff behind, Mike knows this, especially in this building, who does a great job. Everything behind the walls in your building is a disaster. You need to fix all that. We ended up going from a $12 million, four, four science labs, to renovating every science lab in the building and most of the utilities and everything else. It ended up being a $46 million project. Now, this is 2013, maybe even earlier than that, 2012, 2013, so a ways ago. So do they consider those types of projects? They do. But don't forget, if that's the shot you're gonna take, you're not gonna get in line for the next, for the $500 million building project, so.
Okay, Mr. Raymond?
Yeah. A lot of good points were brought up tonight. Mike talking about, you know, some things about how many people we're expanding versus cost. Then you had talked about expansion of the school. And I, my concern is the fact that when you're talking about the numbers, the finances, you're gonna make that budget really, really tight. And it makes me nervous when you make your budget that tight. Let me ask really for Tammy. I mean, she lives in these numbers. Hey, that's her job. She lives, sees it in and out sideways. In the big scheme of things, what does your gut feeling tell you? Can we survive this if we went this way, number wise?
We can survive whatever you are willing to work.
God, she likes to deflect.
No, it's, but truly, I can and shouldn't take ownership of $2 billion...
I got you.
...dollars above net school spending. I, that is for you...
Yeah, I got you.
...to think about your personal, like, I will make anything you want work.
Yeah.
I'll work it. But that's really...
At this point, I'm, I'm leaning in favor of going this direction because I look at it this way from, of course, I represent just Atho. This school was built in 1965. Since then, we've never really asked a lot, my understanding of our, any of our towns to do anything with this school. Just once. Just once, okay, since 1965. That's a long time. How many, I'm gonna, how many times towns have built brand new schools already? And we're sitting here keeping this building looking new, upgrading constantly and trying to stay in budget. I'm willing to take the risk. If they believe that we can make it work, I'm willing to take risks. We gotta fix our field, that's a given, good way to pay for it. And two, I think that we'll be able to get those numbers back. And if not, we're gonna have to lean on that now because let's face it, we have, we don't ask much of our towns for our school. And these are their kids too. So maybe we have to wake up and say, if it gets too tight and we've gotta go to our towns, I'm willing to do it because they really haven't done much since 1965, my book, the opinion. So I'm game.
All right. Kelvin, did you have something?
Yes, I did. On the, on the athletic field project, I think it is something we need to do. And I'm speaking for myself this time. I, I think it's something that we, we need to do. At the meeting, Tammy felt that it was a number she could incorporate into the, the budget without any severe problem. I mean, it cuts into what we have to spend, but the figure that she spoke up tonight was just under $500,000. Okay, it's something we need to do. To answer Mr. Hurley's question, my understanding with the, the bid is that they're going to put out to bid for a, a natural grass field with artificial turf as an alternative. And that way, we have a price as to what the grass would be and the add-on for artificial turf. So we'll have a good handle on to what that difference is and can make a decision at that time. So I think the, the joint committee did kind of agree to the project and spoke about moving forward with estimates and, and getting some financing information and eventually coming back to this committee for approval. On the CTE grant, I guess I'm, I'm concerned because it is gonna put, suck up a lot of future expenses from our budget. And we talked about, you know, going back to the towns asking, and I'm in a city. So the city's and towns asking for more money. That, to me, is a recipe for disaster in this sense that it really is, what we're talking about is a capital improvement. it really is, what we're talking about is a capital improvement or capital item that we're doing as a lease. And we're doing it with the athletic fields, we did it with the roof. Okay, it's a way to get things done. But when you're talking about an expansion of the school, more students being taken out of the local school districts and then asking the local do- school district to spend more money, and they have no say in it? Because we're doing it all this way? I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I'm a little uncomfortable. And I think if, if we want to do it, we, we need to be a little more upfront with them and say, okay, we're going to, do it as a capital project, and this is what we're trying to do. And I, and I know that'll be, that'll be a hard sell, but the other way, I think you're going to, you're going to lose people today. Thank you.
Jack?
Yes?
Be in the one time I'm here. Um, the last major renovation, you came correct me from Rome, was back in ninety-six, when we added on the auditorium, we added on the new gym, and we made some other changes, et cetera. Since then, we have not gone back, that I can remember, gone back for any major money to the cities and towns since ninety-six. We have then also spent multi-million dollars through a special deal with Trane where we got roof, re-roofed down. We got some, um, lighting done and all energy improvement, and we paid with that, with what we would be paying for our electricity and our gas. And pretty much, and that was multi-million dollars. That did not cost the town anything, but we were able to maintain the building and improve the building. Then we had the vet science program. There is a great program, there's a building, never cost the cities and towns anything. We have not gone back to the cities and towns like Johnson's, I mean, uh, Jeff said.
Thank you.
Since, since, uh, since it was really started. But the one time we did go back was in ninety-six, and of course, that debt's long been paid for. Um, again, you know, I, I don't know, you could always turn down the grant, I guess.
Dr. Druity?
Yes. Tammy, you said it, the capital gains would be twenty percent more because?
The assessments?
Yeah, twenty percent more.
It'd be like a rough estimate I did with, um, like our net school spending requirement, how much over we have to be, um, to fit, to keep kind of a status quo. With that in there, yes, it would be about a, with, with the debt in there, with potential contract negotiations because we're going into there, um, with the increases I talked about to health insurance. Um, yeah, we would, we would be looking at potentially being over our net school spending requirement by, um, almost three million, two point seven of, uh.
My next question is, is that, um, have you tentatively calculated what each community is going to pay? I know Pittsburgh is going to pay twenty-five percent of that twenty percent,
That.
which is an increase at ten percent. Gardeners is going to be about fourteen percent. So I think he's, the community, the members of this committee need to see what it's actually going to cost.
It could, it could potentially be, um, like a seven approximate, depending on enrollment and how everything trickles through. Again, this is really, because you know the state changes the preliminary contribution, but it could be, um, between a six and seven hundred thousand dollar increase for Pittsburgh next year. Yes.
Next year?
Oh, no, that would be just next year with the debt, with the, um, one point four million dollar debt in there. That's if that gets, if the debt, the one point four gets there, plus contract negotiations.
It's, it's not debt, though, it's a, it's a lease, correct?
Correct, but it's still.
Because there's a di- because there's a difference, isn't there?
There is, it would be assessed, it would be assessed to the community such a operating
Yep.
um, percentage, which for Pittsburgh is actually higher. This year, it's twenty, almost twenty-seven percent.
Yep.
Uh, so, yeah, that's if it, if we borrowed it in a time where we'd start repaying in FY twenty-seven. And again, those other factors. I don't know what's going to happen with contract negotiations. I have to create kind of a contingency in my head for that. We definitely have health insurance increases coming down the pipe, stuff like that.
Well, and also, they're, they're starting to have conversations about the chapter seventy formula as well.
Yes. They're doing a listening tour right now, so.
All right, let's try to wrap this up real quick. Uh, Shelley?
Um, so I think it's important to think about, I know for my community, I'm constantly being asked, how can we get more seats? How can we get more kids into tech schools? And we're talking about a fifty percent savings based off of rough numbers. The state is going to give us five million, we're going to put in five million. And so you're accomplishing a task of getting more seats at a time where we're only going to absorb fifty percent of that cost. If we wait, the potential is, we now have to come up with ten million.
Yep.
The full amount. So I think this is really important to think of it that way.
Uh, Wendy, you have another chance, yes?
Sure, I was just, I was kind of going to back what you're saying, because we do sit here every month and say, we need more vocational seats, we need more vocational seats, how are we going to get kids in here? And there's been talk about the ROI and, you know, is this, what are we going to get out of this? And I think to say like, okay, we're going to add one hundred and sixty students in, in this building, feels short-stated to me in the sense that you're going to look at decades upon decades of students that will run through this facility that aren't going to have a better opportunity than in the one that currently exists. So even if you are adding a program, you are improving the existing one. You are bringing in more students. If you look at the numbers of student increase over time, it's significant. When we think about, you know, the thirty-six students, the one hundred and sixty students, what we're looking at, again, doesn't take long for that to be a significant number of kids. Um, and then we also think the ROI for the community, that you are then rolling out students who become adults who can fill gaps in employment. So the ROI is there for the school, right? Why, why are we here? To serve and educate students. And we roll it out to the community as well, because the community is the ROI. And then I think to the point of the athletic facility, please look at the seal on the wall, we care about appearances. We put a lot of money into appearances. And for what is the largest public-facing item on the facility? It is your, it's your athletic facility. What the other schools come to and how they judge you, right? They're not going to go into your shops and take a look, they look at your fields and say, wow, this is not real impressive. And that's not great, right? So if we're going to put money into our athletic facilities, it serves our kids, it serves our communities, and it's PR. So it serves technical processes.
Awesome. Mike, you've been waiting for a while.
Uh, no, I think it's important that we, uh, we look at the whole picture and it's, uh, we need to do something with our athletic facilities. And, uh, that's just important for our public image. Now, Jeff brought up the idea that, uh, how long these schools have been around. I, I have a little bit of a feel for how long they've been around because when this school was built, I came here. I spent two years at Pittsburgh Vocational School before I came up here and graduated in nineteen seventy-four as president of my class. So I'm a little bit familiar with the background we had here. But at the time, the state made these vocational schools like cookie cutters. Each area of the state got one. We have a problem here. The problem we have here is, uh, the budget for the city of Pittsburgh doesn't look very good at all for the future. And we've got towns that are losing population. Some of the towns we have here, the kids are leaving. I look at other vocational schools in the state, and a good example of one that's been expanded recently is Minuteman. We don't have Lexington and Concord in these towns that have some money, but we have to do something. And I'm not sure exactly what the answer is right now. But we can't be overextended to the, I mean, Tammy explained that we have twelve percent insurance coming in. We have eight percent transportation costs coming in. We don't know what's coming in from two seventy Westminster Street with that lease or rent or buy or what's going to happen there in the future. And, um, we just have to be realistic. I do think that increasing our population is going to help us and naturally help our budget. But I think we ought to think about an innovative way of maybe bringing in another program. And if we're going to be empty, an area down here, maybe we can look at bringing something else in there. Because that's something that these towns and cities are going to buy. And, uh, that's the way I feel, thanks.
Mr. Conover?
I'd like to ask, Mr., I'll do that in a second, but I'd like to ask a specific quick question. Because I, I happen to actually support the idea of expanding, but I know Mr. Rosebrow is concerned about capital versus a lease. And I think, and I'd like you to confirm this, I think if we actually went out to bond, it would actually end up costing the cities and towns more because of the political conflict between that school and that school's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go away.
Yeah, so. All right.
It would, it would be on, it would be on top of the operating budget.
Yeah.
Capital would be extra.
Just keep the capital down.
And that, I don't know how, that, that's a piece I don't quite understand, but I, I accept it.
Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I understand.
I, I like the idea of expanding and, you know, opening up space for more academics. Um, it seems a little bit rushed to me, but probably the biggest concern is a, a pretty optimistic timeline of completing the facility. Um, and the fastest facility I ever saw go in was just recently down at the shoulder where they did like a prefab structure with the prime buildings, which those could be in single-story, two-story, three-story. Um, you know, it's, it's not ideal space, it's, it's, it's not so much brick and mortar. Uh, it's a, a lot faster and a lot, uh, more economical, uh, to deal with game space. Can't really do a heavy trade like that, but, uh, you know, health occupations trade, I'm sure it could fit in one of those structures. Um, but I, I think it just, it would take a little bit different approach to, um, that's a pretty tight timeline in my mind.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the district committee authorize the administration to apply and seek to lead expansion.
But a motion and a second. For a call to vote, I don't want to tell you how to vote, but I want you to consider two things. Number one is, this is obviously a good program for the school versus can your local community absorb the expense? And that's up to you. So having said that, Julie, will you part of voting?
Yes, John, question. Don't have a question.
No, we, we, we're taking it.
What is something different?
What's that?
You might have a different question.
We've made the motion, it's been moved in second, and we've called a vote.
And still has question, and has discussion, that's what's the issue.
Discussion after that.
With discussion.
Would you tell that discussion, after the presentation's not, after the motion like you usually do? That's a good use of it. So don't have a question or a comment. I think that would probably be the one.
Make it brief.
After that, you want to talk?
I, I actually wanted to hear from Mike. And I, I was wondering, we're building a brand-new twenty thousand square foot building, forty-three feet away from a, what we all know as a dinosaur. And if we are going to do something with the dinosaur, how will that impact that brand-new building? If it will, or are we able to? I feel like we're putting something really nice next to something that's, we know is not, and what are we going to do?
I think we're, I think we're pretty nice.
It's got charm.
But, but, but if we do decide in five years, ten years, whatever the case is, that we do in fact need to do a half a billion dollar new building or whatever the case is for a new technical school, do we just tear down the twenty thousand square foot building, or can we continue to keep that and do the project?
I don't think we have to decide that tonight.
You know, um, sort of, if, if the school committee in the future decided to say, we're looking at spending five hundred million because that's what the cost estimate would be following today. I know in two thousand and nineteen, the cost estimate, when we did the DRA feasibility study here, their estimate at that time was a hundred and sixty million. But of course, then we had COVID. So prices increased, right? Um, and that was based on about a five hundred thousand square foot building compared to what we have right now, three hundred and ten thousand square feet. Uh, based on lack of storage, the size of the chapter seventy, you know, all programs here, they're, they don't meet requirements. Uh, so a- as you all know, we're not going to tear this building down and rebuild here. We, we build out of Westminster. So will that building stay there? It wouldn't have to. I wouldn't see us tearing that down. I wouldn't see us, you know, moving the vet science program to add the building to that. Put a new building wherever we can.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Real quick.
Real quick, I noticed that, uh, we skipped over one C, I believe, in our agenda, public comment. Do we have any public comment here tonight, or did we ask that?
No, we skipped public comment.
Yep.
Yes, you did.
All right, we will, uh, we have a motion on the floor, we got to deal with the motion. We have a motion and a second. Julie, will you call the vote, please?
I don't see it. No.
It's a tie. Are you sure?
Okay. Wow.
Fails.
Ah, so it goes down.
So we ask.
Fails.
Technically, it fails. Unless this is less of a discussion than we want, we voted.
Seven of seven.
The vote here is really, isn't actually to do anything but to send the grant application, yeah?
Correct.
So the town Berry has, this vote doesn't do anything because this grant application could not work out. We could get it, we could then get in kind of nations. So as I sit here and vote, yes, I'm not thinking I have just sent Berry a significant bill. I'm saying, I have given us the opportunity to see if the state's going to give us five million dollars for this, yeah?
Well, the motion is.
Well, that's not the way it was presented.
The motion is to, they tend to be a part of the grant theory.
Just authorize.
Right, just authorize.
Yeah, right.
But we expect that.
I did ask last time what the repercussions if we applied and then we got it, and we were like, just kidding. And it's, he said it's not.
It's not.
Not done.
Yeah, well, because then they're going to, the next grand you play, you apply for, they're going to say, well, you're going to say no to that?
Yeah.
How many times have we applied and not taken?
I.
We're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they get a, get a grant in August of twenty twenty-five to execute by February of twenty twenty-seven. It takes less than two-year timeframe to execute three new programs to build the building. We didn't put the, we didn't put the short timeframe on this, the state did.
Julie, do we have a, we have a vote?
I think we had a pretty short.
It's a tie.
It's a tie.
What's that?
It's a tie.
It's a tie.
A tie?
Yeah.
So it goes down.
Well, technically, it's voting unless, unless somebody wants it promoted.
Upon reflection, does anyone want to change their vote? If not, the motion is defeated.
So would you like the next motion?
What's that?
Do you want the next motion? Move that the district committee authorize the administration to pursue the next steps with the athletic complex renovation project?
Second.
We have a second.
Second.
All right. We have, really, is there any questions regarding the athletic complex? Seeing none, you want to call a vote, Julie? Okay, that passed. Do you give us a total?
Eleven yes, two no, one abstention.
Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Motion's made to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?